Welcome to the Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. Before we get started tonight, I think folks know that during COVID, post-COVID, we've been doing meetings in a hybrid fashion, and that continues. Some folks may be watching from home that want to participate in the meeting either through public comment in that public comment period, or when we get to a public hearings, and we've got three of those tonight. And so we'll take testimony live from folks here in the audience that wish to comment on matters of concern to them during public comment or doing any of the public hearings. Then we'll turn to folks that are online that want to testify that way. And there'll be two opportunities, as I said here, both in public comment and community comment and public hearings. The call number is 888-504-7949. It should show up on the screen here. You call that number, enter their participant passcode, which is 565-566. Press *1 to speak to an operator, and then Director Benarott will bring you in to speak to the council. And remember, if you're calling in for community comment, you can't comment to the council on anything that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. So if you want to talk about something that's on the agenda this evening, it better be a public hearing matter, and then you can call in during that portion of the meeting. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order. I'm going to call on Clerk Sharon Ellison to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a form of meeting agenda that's been published to our citizenry and to the council. Manager Neal, is there anything you wanted to modify on the agenda?
No, sir, there is not.
Any of the council members wish to modify the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to approve the meeting agenda as published. Any further conversation? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we are at community comment, so if someone wants to come up and talk to the council about a matter that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing, if you're in the audience, please feel free to come up and address the council. Good evening.
Good evening. Danny Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue, Edina. Just this evening, reconstruction, fixing the pedestrian bridge that spans the crosstown highway just west of France Avenue, started. Well, the road is blocked, or, okay, the crosstown, whatever is going on, there was no forewarning signage for drivers going southbound on Valley View or northbound on Valley View to let them know that the ramp, the entrance ramp to go west on the crosstown was closed. And it was creating great confusion at 5:30 this evening when I was northbound. There was no signage for warning people, and it was a traffic mess. I don't know what was going on.
We're going to tell you.
Okay, thank you.
I had that same experience.
If you can address that, what's going on?
Well, go ahead. I think you'll be disappointed to hear the bridge got hit again.
So at 1:00 PM, the bridge got hit by another truck carrying a beam, so it was an emergency closure of 62 to make it a safe area for people to go through, and MINDOT's evaluating the bridge to see when 62 can be reopened. I don't know if it is already. And then they were supposed to fix the first hit, so now they have to do a whole other analysis to determine if this is a fix or if this is something larger than that. So apologize for the confusion, but that was the emergency closure because of a hit of a summer.
Okay. I was worried if I was going to get to this meeting on time. All right. I don't know if that can get picked up, but thank you for that information.
It was my concern. It was chaos over there.
Yes, it was, and I'm anxiously awaiting a fully accessible for anyone with wheels or handicapped issues to get over that bridge. I'm waiting for that new bridge, so thank you.
Well, that'll be a three- or four-year proposition from what we're told at MINDOT. So, all right, anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to talk today, Mayor Hovland, council members. My name is Matthew Salzwell. I am the Vice President of the Crossview Lutheran Church Church Council. Crossview is located at 6645 McCauley Trail West in Edina. And I'm here to discuss the church's request, which we put in two letters to the council to relocate a part of a multi-use path from the south side of McCauley to the north side of McCauley as it passes the church. I'm also here in representing the 222 members of the city of Edina that go to Crossview Lutheran Church. And we've set forth our position in the letter. You have that. I'm not going to go through the entire, the entire letter, but I just want to just raise just a couple brief, high-level points. Our request is small, but it is straightforward, and we think it's very easy to approve. All you have to do is extend the path on the north side of McCauley. It's already approved from Gleason to Timber Trail on the north side to accommodate some homeowners there, just to extend it another 700 feet to McIntyre Point. Again, the north side's already approved. You already are on that side, and all you'd have to do is extend another 700 feet. The church has serious concerns about traffic congestion issues and safety issues for its early childhood center if the path is put on the south side. There is some landscaping work and things like that, which we believe will add extra cost to the project because of the north side of McCauley is flat. On the south side, there's a slope going towards the church. So we think there's some cost savings potentially here for the city of Edina as well. And we don't believe there's any additional safety concerns. There's two curves on McCauley, one that's going east on McCauley up to McIntyre Point, and there's also one going west on McCauley right after Gleason Road. And both of those curves there present the same issue, cars coming around that, many of them going fast, but in the end, it's a wash. If you put the, if you put the crossover of the path at McIntyre Point as opposed to at Timber Trail, you have the same issue as you would if you put the crossover from the north side to the south side at Timber Trail. And really, the last thing is, I know that the, I know that the city wants to have the path on the side of the street that's closest to where the homeowners are. And there's only really one neighborhood that's affected, or really one street that's affected by that, that's Timber, the people who live on Timber Trail. There's seven houses on Timber Trail. So we think that added potential inconvenience for people who might want to use the path of having to cross the street is really something that's minor, and that doesn't, that does not outweigh the church's concerns. So, you know, again, unless there's any questions you might have for me, you know, the church has been around for 50 years. We've never objected really to anything. We were part of developing that area significantly, including, I believe, donating some property to create some of those homes in that area. So we just respectfully request that the council grant our request in this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Salzwell. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the council about a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? All right, let's go to any folks that might be online. Again, I'm going to ask staff to put up the phone number to call in, the call-in number, 888-504-7949, conference ID 565-566. Press *1 to speak to the operator, and then the operator will get you to Director Benarott, and you get into the council through Director Benarott. Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, sir, I have no one on the line. I think it's up to you whether or not you'd like to wait further. It's been over a minute since we started community comment.
I think since we've had folks speaking here, there should have been a lot of people to queue up if they were on the line, so I think we'll just move ahead. As is our practice, our city manager responds to community comments from the prior meeting. Manager Neal, anything you want to comment on that might have occurred at the prior meeting?
Yes, Your Honor. I will tell you, we had one speaker at our previous council meeting. It was a resident from the Melody Lake project area talking with the council about lawn restoration post-project. We did get a report from our engineering director, Mr. Milner, and things have happened out there during the, during the time since the last council meeting. We're seeing some, some of the success of the application of herbicide and, and some mowing that has happened. So we're seeing progress happen since, since the council had that speaker. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Is that prompt anything from any of the council members? Yes.
I just wanted to add, I was out there this weekend, and they are having crabgrass growing. So the herbicide got the broadleaf, but now there's crabgrass, so just let you know about that, so.
Consent agenda is the next item for us to deal with. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? I forgot to mention this to Manager Neal today, but I wanted to pull item H, 6H, which was the Comcast extension of the term of the franchise. I wanted to talk about that a little bit, so I'm going to pull H, 6H. With respect to the balance of the consent agenda, with the exception of 6H, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 6H. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, let me go to that 6H item. This might be a Manager Neal question. So I was kind of curious about making a determination to agree to extend the term of the, of the contract on the franchise term for a year. I guess it's just actually not a year, it's about six months before we have the terms negotiated on what's going to be happening. It seemed to me an odd sequence. I know you need the extension of the term to be able to have time to negotiate, but...
That's correct.
It's the same odds, so I thought you should explain it.
The renegotiation of the franchise with Comcast, prior to those negotiations starting, there are a number of different studies and assessments of needs assessment, equipment assessment that goes on. That, that has just recently wrapped up. So, so the discussion with, with the provider, with the cable provider, in this case Comcast, we are ready to start those, and then the discussion has already started with Mr. Grogan and his peers there, and they're quite confident that this January 31st, 2023 extension is going to be sufficient.
Okay. Yeah, that gives us five months to get those things accomplished. And I just want to also comment quickly that when you're in the context of making, doing these, conducting these terms and conditions negotiations, that we're, you know, do we, do they have an exclusive in our community? They don't, because we get other internet providers coming in here, and I think we'll have more companies requesting to do so in the future with the money that's coming in through the infrastructure bill. I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves in an awkward position there that would foreclose us from opportunities for our residents.
Comcast is not a, is not a sole provider. I mean, they are essentially a sole provider as a, you know, as a market condition, but we can have other cable providers as long as they, as long as they comply with the same terms and conditions that are in the franchise agreement.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move 2022-07, ordinance extending the term of the franchise held by Comcast of Minnesota for five months. Second. We got a second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2022-07, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. There might have been a member Staunton, I just couldn't quite hear very well.
I was thrown my voice.
It was a pretty good, it was, yeah, a pretty good James Pierce invitation. All right. Now we're on to special recognitions and presentations, and it's really a pleasure to have James Whisker, the district administrator for the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, with us this evening, as well as one of our own residents. And Steve, nice to have you here, and really eager to get this presentation out to our, out to our citizenry. So this is something we've been talking about doing for a while. Arden Park has turned out to be quite a gem, and why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, give us your address, and then also make sure we understand and know, our residents know that you're on the board now as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Sandow, Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, Board.
You might have to hold this closer.
5133 Waneda, Edina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Three years ago, the city of Edina and the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, in a collaborative effort, took Arden Park from a diamond in the rough, and we've made it shine. Three years ago, the city of Edina, Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, in a collaborative effort, took Arden Park again from a diamond in the rough and made it shine. MCWD work is always driven by science, but is made possible only through deep partnership with cities, landowners, developers, and partners like Edina. The creek once ran straight through Arden Park. It's been re-meandered to benefits including better storm water management, reducing flood risk, better aquatic environment, and improvements for kayaking, tubing, and especially the kids and the parents enjoying the flow of the creek through Arden Park. The creek has become a focal point of Arden Park. Buckthorn was removed and some trees had to be removed, including diseased ash. However, twice as many trees have been replanted. Four swells were installed, collecting storm water from the surrounding area, including 50th and France. Swells captured debris and pollutants before the end of the creek. They also slowed down the water flow, preventing flooding. The MCWD is proud of what we have been able to accomplish. Arden Park included improved stream ecology, managing flood and drainage, improved recreation access to our community. Build it, and they will come. People from other communities are visiting our park, Arden Park, sometimes hundreds per week. The Arden Park restoration has been awarded a 2022 grand award from the American Engineering Companies. Other awards are pending. A collaborative effort by the city of Edina and MCWD has transformed Arden Park into a delightful oasis. MCWD is looking forward to working with the city of Edina on other projects for the betterment of the environment. James Whisker, the administrator of Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, will speak next. He's smarter than me, but I'm older.
I'll give you the introduction. Can you get a little help in making this screen? I'm not sure if I have to be here.
I think I can.
Maybe I'll let me up to the height of being smarter.
Goodness, goodness.
I can work with that.
Well, the list is being somewhat uncoordinated. I think Steve stole most of my thunder, but good evening, everybody. I'm James Whisker. I'm the administrator for the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, and I'm going to just get my bearings here so I can see what I'm actually presenting. And I just want to take a minute to thank the Edina City Council and staff for inviting us here today to provide an update on the work and projects of the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District and any points of connection that we have with the city of Edina, who's been a tremendous partner over the years. And there's some new faces, I think, on the council. It's been a minute since I've been in front of council with COVID and just the timeline for this project. And so to begin, I wanted to just take a moment to remind you who the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District is. And since geography is really everything to watershed, I'm going to start by just orienting us to our 178 square mile watershed, which includes a real rich tapestry of land use and natural resources running west of Minneapolis and covering portions of both Carver and Hennepin County and 29 communities ranging from urban in the east to rural and ex-urban in the west, all the way out just east of Lake Waconia, if you can believe it. The watershed's also got blessed with an abundance of natural systems and resources, including over 120 lakes and 10 major stream systems, thousands of wetlands in some real iconic resources in the metro like Lake Minnetonka, Minnehaw Creek, the Minneapolis chain of lakes, and Minnehaw Falls. And so in terms of our vision, we believe, and I think we share this belief with the city of Edina, that natural systems underpin local community identity, and they can create a sense of place. And for us, what that means is, when watershed work is meaningfully integrated into land use planning, we can create real triple bottom line of social, economic, and environmental benefit. And one thing that we like to talk about is where that value system came from, and it came from our simple understanding of what happens with how we use the land drives what happens with the water. So watershed organizations need to be a part of how the land is planned and managed, but we don't own all the land, and we don't make all the decisions about how it's going to be used. The people that do that are private landowners, businesses, developers, and decision-makers at cities and counties such as yourself. So if we want to be successful, those are really our principal partners. And it's for that reason that the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District takes considerable effort to always position water as a central and organizing element in the context of building vibrant communities. And that has us always thinking about how our investments can be a catalyst in supporting the goals of others in sectors of transportation, housing, economic development, and just the broader goals of our partners. And to accomplish that, over the years, we've dealt some focused strategies for integrating land and water planning and for cultivating public and private partnerships. As Steve mentioned, first, always building off of a base of sound watershed science, really understanding what's happening with our water. We then work with our communities, development partners, to layer in things like infrastructure, economic development, and parks and open space, and in doing so, reveal hidden opportunities for win-win solutions. And what we call our Balanced Urban Ecology Approach was memorialized in our 2017 plan with broad support from our member communities, including the city of Edina, and profiled the principles that we think of continue to make us successful, including things like focus. We really believe that in, in work and in life, focus is essential to success. So we focus geographically so that we can deeply engage in driving solutions that represent the context of local community, delivering high-impact projects that also produce focused results that we can measure. And to complement that, we really prize ourselves on being flexible, creative, solutions-oriented thinkers, which position us as effective partners, which we do by understanding the goals of others and finding ways to integrate watershed thinking and bring mutual value. And this is where Steve stole my thunder. One of our best examples in our portfolio of that approach is our work with the city of Edina at Arden Park. As you know, following the flood of record in the watershed in 2014, which damaged the spillway for the low-head dam just downstream of West 54th Street, the city and the watershed partnered to reimagine a more resilient public space that was anchored by the placemaking asset of Minnehaw Creek, integrating goals of thoughtful public access, recreation, and well-being with efforts to restore ecology, improve water quality, and manage drainage and flooding in the park. And that work involved re-meandering over 2,000 feet of the creek back to a more historic and natural alignment, which added over 230 feet of stream length, increased capacity, slowed water down, and included five acres of floodplain restoration, all in all, which improved the overall ecology of the system, while also offering programmed access down to the water, which Steve neatly profiled with folks tubing and recreating down in the creek, allowing people to really get their hands in there and experience the power of of water and place, while also providing 80 acres of regional storm water management from as far away as 50th and France, which improves the quality of the creek and the waters that runs downstream to Lake Hiwatha. And then the park also included thousands of new plantings and pollinator habitat, setting just a beautiful frame for the new park shelter building, new trails, bridges, playground. And I think the end result's just an amazing place within the city that's good for the watershed and good for the community. And we just mentioned that work was recognized with a grand award from the Minnesota American Council of Engineering Companies, and I just heard that it was recently awarded the National Excellence Award as well. So that's on its, that's in the mail. So I'll pause here and just say a big thank you to your staff and the council for the vision, the partnership in delivering this project. And with a quick note, that one thing that we'll be connecting on with your team sometime in the near future is site interpretation. We made a calculated decision on signage and interpretation to leave that out of design and construction so that we could really observe how people are using the, the space and what stories to highlight. A few more things to profile here, and then I'll see if there's any questions. More recently, the watershed district and the city of Edina executed a cooperative agreement for partnership around the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. And as you know, this project was proposed by the city as part of your flood risk mitigation strategy for the surrounding neighborhood. And among other things, the project involves expanding Weber Pond to create more storage, and then using pumps to manage water levels and create flood storage when it's really needed ahead of storms and during storms for the surrounding homes. And the partnership, which now includes the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, has the three partners exploring opportunities in Seachu at Weber, but also downstream on ponds that the watershed district operates right before all that water discharges into Bade Makaska, to look for water quality net benefit for the downstream lake through the project that you're pioneering. And I think we're making good progress with your engineering team. So far, the team's had a couple of meetings to frame the project options. Those are being pared down, and we're now beginning to detail out feasibility of, of some of those projects in terms of cost and benefit, operations and maintenance. And I think recommendations will be coming forward sometime between September and October from that staff team. Pending dialogue between ourselves, the city, downstream city, Minneapolis, Minneapolis and Park and Recreation Board. So just excited about the prospect of another value-added partnership here with the city of Edina to both meet your flood mitigation and resilience goals while also providing a net benefit in water quality downstream. And that flood mitigation focus of Morningside, I think, serves as a nice transition into work that the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District's advancing with its climate action framework. If you look outside, you'll probably notice it's pretty dry. We're part of 3% of the state that's in a two-year drought right now. It wasn't long ago, however, that we're the tail end of the wettest seven years ever recorded by people in the region, with surplus surface and groundwater creating conflict across the watershed with the built environment, with basements down in Minneapolis, with homes in the upper watershed, with flooding along the creek. And recognizing that the state is indeed getting warmer, it is getting wetter, and that's predicted to exacerbate through the, the middle of this century, we're developing a climate strategy that really has us living into our core strengths of sound science and our track record of convening partners to identify solutions. And knowing that water doesn't follow political boundaries, we see one of our core responsibilities in understanding how water's moving through the 29 communities, the entire system, and importantly, not just understanding what's happening today, but being able to predict how those patterns might change in the future. In five years, what do our water patterns look like? In 10 years, in 20 years? And then using those forecasts to work alongside communities to develop coordinated adaptation strategies that help us manage the balance of water equitably across the system. And before I wrap- of water equitably across the system. And before I wrap up, there's two ways that I want to profile in which we're leaning into that first pillar of the work immediately, understanding and predicting. The first involves generating short-term predictions that allow us to really optimize the one piece of regional infrastructure that we actually own, which is Gray's Bay Dam. And the second, longer term, is developing new modeling tools that are going to allow us to work with communities to develop vulnerability assessments and co-plan adaptation strategies and infrastructure investments that give us all the best return on investment. So on that first short-term basis, some of this work's already been happening and is in play through those wettest seven years that I just mentioned. We're working with the National Weather Service, the United States Geological Survey, and Hennepin County to use predictive capabilities to maximize storage of water in the system through how we operate Gray's Bay Dam, which regulates flow from Lake Minnetonka into the creek and effectively uses what is the ninth-largest lake in our state, Minnetonka, as a reservoir to store and protect, store water and protect downstream communities from flooding. And that partnership, which has been profiled at several climate conferences, frames out how the National Weather Service right now is giving us granular weather forecasts, and that predicts how the lake is going to respond over the next seven days. And so that's a prediction of weather, and we know how useful those can be. So next, we actually want to measure what falls from the sky. How accurate were the weather predictions? And so we're partnered with Hennepin County, who operates a mesonet, it's a weather station, those green diamonds on your screen, and we measure it, how much rain actually did fall across the district. And that's important because when it rains an inch in Edina, it may only rain a quarter of an inch up in Orono. And so we're getting forecasts, we're measuring the rain, and then the final step is looking at how do our lakes and streams and wetlands respond with flow and level, which we do through the sensor network called ResNet, which stands for a Real-Time Sensor Network. When you add all that up, the weather forecast, the measured rain, and the measured change in levels and flow across all these different storms, it's just giving us a tremendous amount of data, which we're squeezing through machine learning, deep learning, in partnership with the University of Minnesota. And what that's allowing us to do is take weather forecasts in the future, coupled with current lake and creek levels, and actually predict what's going to happen across the system. And so what that might look like in the future is opening the dam ahead of a storm and having the creek run at full capacity for two days ahead of the thunderstorm, then closing the gates, allowing the creek to lower, and then using the inch of storage that we've created on the lake as a buffer for downstream communities to mitigate flooding. And that's really important because of the size of the lake. One inch of storage on Lake Minnetonka is the equivalent of about five feet of depth over a lake like Lake Nacomis downstream in Minneapolis. So finally, the next piece of work I want to touch on before we wrap up that's related to climate, and I think involves sort of our mutual interests on water management with the city of Edina, is our effort to build what we're calling a two-dimensional model of the watershed, computer model. It's taking city storm suror data from our 29 communities and combining it with state data sets for land surface. And again, it's going to allow us to run vulnerability assessments or conduct scenario planning that will give us a high-resolution prediction of what water patterns might look like further out, five years, 10 years, 20 years, predicting where flooding's going to occur, where pipe capacity might be an issue, where groundwater flooding might be a problem. But more important than that, it's going to allow us to understand what solutions are needed, where should they be located on the landscape, what's their respective return on investment, and how can we coordinate those investments across the watershed to provide a balance between the natural and built environments? And this effort, we're proud to say, has broad support from our communities, including, thank you, a letter of support from the city of Edina, as well as a range of other agencies like the DNR, USGS, Met Council, Hennepin County, the EQB, and on and on. And due to a legislative snafu, we're back in queue for the second time again for LCCMR funding. So we're hoping that goes smooth and will be on our way to building this model this time next year. So as I wrap here and take any questions you might have, I just wanted to finish by saying again, it's been a while, but thank you. Thank you both to the council and staff for the vision that Edina has and your continued partnership with the watershed district. I think we've achieved a lot already by working closely together, and we look forward to what we can accomplish next. So thank you for your time this evening. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whisker. Yeah, we'll see if any of the council members have questions or comments. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you both for your presentations. I love looking at the green and the water, and I love that this is all science-based. So this is fascinating. So thank you very much. I've been spending quite a bit of time talking with people about the infrastructure bill. And one of the things that I've learned is that the federal government and the discretionary grants, they are interested in communities working together. And I wondered if the watershed district was looking at any sort of communal grant opportunities for stormwater or for water management that we could all come together and apply for some of that federal money. Are you working on that?
Councilmember Jackson, thank you so much for your question. I think we're at midpoint in our 10-year planning cycle, and what we're anticipating is within the next year, as this model starts to be built and we start to generate these analyses, is bringing all of our communities together and starting to actually develop a focused and coordinated strategy for flood management that has us balancing upstream-downstream needs. And I think that's the exact kind of work that would be suitable for funding through the infrastructure bill.
Okay, thank you. That's all I can say.
Other questions, comments for Mr. Whisker? I would just say that the years I've been on the council, since you particularly went to work, not as the district administrator, but as a young engineer, you've been just so cooperative, especially you cooperated with the city of Edina, and you've been just a delight to work with in a professional capacity. And I want to thank you for the attention you professionally and personally give Edina, and also the attention you've given to the whole watershed district. It's a pleasure to have worked with you and to have Steve in our community and have been so committed on Arden Park and making sure that it realizes its potential. Thank you to you and your wife as well for all those hours of service and your continued interest in all of this. So yeah, thanks for being with us this evening.
I appreciate that so much. The city of Edina makes it easy. You get a great council, great leadership, and we love working with your staff.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Whisker. Thanks for being with us. All right, we're going to move on now to the next portion of the agenda. That was the only matter we had in special recognitions and presentations this evening. So we've got three public hearings, as I mentioned earlier. And the first matter involves something that Director Milner has, and that is approving a right-of-way easement vacation at 7,001 France Avenue. Because of the nature of the matter, it requires public hearing and an opportunity for public testimony. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There's going to be a request for vacation of easements at 7001 France Avenue, embodied in Resolution 2022-74. And we'll have the public hearing started tonight and then close later this week. So these are the existing easements on the southeast quadrant of France and 70th related to a development project. Hennepin County recently vacated easements that they need to do to make the project happen. We had a easement here where the corner of the building is going to be entering. So we have no concerns with vacating that portion of this right-of-way for the project. Private utilities are cleared, and like I mentioned, Hennepin County's already approved this vacation. So we would ask that you close the public hearing at noon on August 29th, and then we would continue this action at the September 9th city council meeting. I'd stand for any questions.
All right. Questions for Director Milner on this matter? All right, thank you. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this proposed Resolution Adoption 2022-74, which potentially approves a right-of-way easement vacation at 7,001 France Avenue? All right, hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, I'll turn to Director Bennerott and see if we have anybody online. Again, a reminder for those that are in the broader audience virtually, here is your call-in number. Let's give them that call-in number again.
Come on, guys.
888-504-7949, conference ID number 565566. Press star one to speak to the operator, and then give them your name and address, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue?
I don't have anyone in the queue or on the line for that matter. However, it hasn't been a full minute yet because there is a delay in the broadcast. I would recommend we wait one minute before moving on, just to make sure we give everyone a chance to call in. My clock shows that it's 7:41, so I'll come back to you when I have a caller or 7:42, whichever is first. It is 7:42, and I still don't have anyone, so I think you can move forward with the agenda.
Thank you. Our Director of Engineering, Chad Milner, recommends that we close the public hearing on this matter at noon on August 22nd and continue the action to the September 7 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Had a motion by Member Stotan, a second by Member Pierce. And it was not Member Stotan making two motions, one imitating Member Pierce, Member Stotan and Member Pierce, that we close the public hearing on this matter at noon on August 22nd, continue the action at the September 7 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next public hearing matter is one that Director Teague has, Community Director Keri Teague. And we've got a couple of presenters, and I see some folks in the audience that might have an interest in this matter as well. This is a public hearing involving proposed site plan review with multiple variances for 4404 Valley View Road, and we welcome Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this property is located in the Valley View Wooddale area. Current zoning is Plan Commercial District 1, which is the vast majority of the zoning district within that area. There was a small area plan done for this area, and this site is included within that. It is suggested for a two-story, 30-foot maximum height. This is a rendering from the small area plan where it was suggesting residential use. Kind of the idea of the small area plan was to have the more intense commercial uses towards the center of the district with residential at the ends. This is just an example of what it might look like. One thing I'd note that you'd see that the building is turned to face kind of the south and east. That was some of the comments that were made from the city council at the sketch plan review for them to shift or turn those units to face that way. Also, within the plan, the corner is suggested for some type of a public art or monument entry into the district. The applicant is willing to do that work with the city to provide something out front. This site was approved back in 2018 for an overall development plan as part of the Edina Flats development. This was to be a four-unit condominium on the site. However, that has not been built due to the economics of it. So the applicant came before the Planning Commission and City Council a few months ago with this sketch plan. And note that the units at that time were facing Valley View Road with a driveway in back. And again, some of the comments were to rotate this building to face Oaklawn. So that is what the applicant has done. They've rotated two of those units that face Oaklawn with driveways that now extend to Oaklawn, and then driveways also off of Valley View. This is just a quick side-by-side comparison of what was approved and the proposal before the council this evening. So this request requires a site plan review, and setback variance is similar to the Edina Flats, setback variance to Oaklawn, to Valley View Road, and to the side lot lines. They're also seeking flexibility in terms of building materials. Our commercial zoning districts require brick or stone on the main level and 75% transparency at the ground. Being this is all residential, they're asking for some flexibility there. Also, one change, or it's not noted on the plan here, but it's been suggested and the applicant is agreeable to it, notice that the existing walk here is shown up against the curb. Part of the recommendation is for that to be a boulevard-style sidewalk with grass in between the curb and the walkway with boulevard trees. That would be the same for along Oaklawn, and the applicant is agreeable to that condition. Again, the applicant has a materials board. If the council is interested in seeing that, and they'll go into more detail of the building materials as part of their presentation. The idea here is to match or kind of blend in with the residential homes in the area. Just some quick renderings of what the project would look like. Facing Valley View, this is a look from Oaklawn. So this graphic indicates a comparison of the city standards for setbacks and the variances that were granted for Edina Flats and what's proposed. Note that the setback on Oaklawn is a little bit greater than the previous project, 20 feet, and variances were granted to 16 feet. Along Valley View, it's 10 feet. A portion of that project was just 5 feet. The setback to the north lot line was approved at 5 feet. This project would be 7 feet. Building height is the same. In terms of the density of this project, this was calculated in the overall Edina Flats. So overall, that project is 30 units an acre. If this were just a standalone project, the density on this site is just 15 units an acre. Relatively small site, of course. So the primary issue for consideration, are the proposed variances justified? Both staff and the planning commission believe that the variances are in this case. The planning commission recommendation was a four-to-two vote. We believe that the proposed variances are reasonable. Again, they're consistent with the approved condominium project, slightly larger or greater setback in some instances. The buildable area is very limited on this site. I'll show a graphic on the next slide that indicates the required setbacks. There's also very large rights of way between the curb and the actual property line, so the impression from the roadway is that these structures would be set back a little further. The zoning ordinance does suggest that the city's council should consider exceptions to those front setback requirements if they're creating a pedestrian, an active pedestrian and streetscape environment. And again, as long as we pull the existing sidewalk back, have that boulevard style with boulevard trees along both Valley View and Oaklawn, that would be accomplished. So this graphic also indicates the required setback on the site. So virtually, nothing could be built here without some type of a variance. Again, we believe that the building materials proposed are better intended to blend into the single-family district. Again, brick is more commercial in use, and that is a commercial zoning district requirement, and that the density is reasonable for this site as well. So again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. We did have a number of comments on Better Together, both for and against. Some of the concerns that were raised for those against the project were that this is inconsistent with the small area plan, especially in regard to those building frontages. There's a lot of driveways here facing the streets. The large variances that are requested, some concern there, and just general feeling that the project is too big for the site. There was also a comment in regards to the history of the site, and is there some contamination? Prior to the hair salon, this was a gas station site, so there was some petroleum leakage into the site. Back in 2009, the property owner did clean the site, and the Pollution Control Agency has dubbed the site ready for development. So that has been cleaned up. So with that, the council recommendation is to close the public hearing at noon on August 22nd and then continue the action until your next city council meeting on September 7th. With that, I can stand for any questions, and the applicant is here for a presentation as well.
All right, we'll go first to questions, potential questions for Director Teague. It was a thorough presentation. That was a thorough presentation. And if nobody has any questions for Director Teague, we'll go to the applicant. I see Ms. Remick is here, and I think people are prepared to hear the applicant at this point in time. Director Teague? So we'll let, and I don't know if she has any other members of her team here.
No, I'm here alone. Hello.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. Thanks for having me again.
Would you give us your name and your full address? Your business address, please?
Rebecca Remick, 3918 Sunnyside Road, City Homes. How do I move forward? Okay. So again, here's the site that we've all been talking about for a long time. This is the area that was approved back in 2018, showing the box with the, where Edina Flats, that first building would have gone, and the driveway actually would have been moreover to the left of that as well. This is the buildable, or what we're looking to build right now with the two row homes facing Valley View and two facing Oaklawn. We believe that this is a better product from even a massing standpoint. With the way that it was before, we were going to have 90 continuous feet. With it being broken up the way that it is, we believe from a massing standpoint and entering into Oaklawn, it's a better product. Again, kind of what Carrie mentioned in terms of the buildable area, and just the lack of what you would be able to do without any variances to this site. We, I think at some point, it was mentioned to meet with the neighborhood. We sent out letters, did hold that meeting for about an hour, talked to the neighbors in the area. We talked about, a lot about the scale of the project. We talked about the density and that there were four with Edina Flats that it was approved and we're looking to do four. We talked about the height being at 30 feet with all of them, much like what the height allowances are for a normal family home in the area. We talked about the material being used on the buildings. There is a board that Jeff made over there. If anybody would like to kind of see, he did a great job of putting just kind of the idea behind the materials for us. We can bring it out if you want to see it, but very nicely done. And I do believe that it is a good way in those materials that are being used that fit better within the neighborhood, fit better and don't stand out as much. And then, I think we needed 11 trees, and we're putting, we're proposing 44. Part of what we talked about with the neighbors were the type of trees even to put up on there. Some of them were boxwoods. We also talked, I forgot about this, a lot about the driveways in terms of, they were concerned about going, how you go around on Oaklawn, and it's kind of that, you know, weird corner around the, and then blocking traffic. So that is why we, in the end, made it so you can see that you could back up on those driveways and go forward out, so you're not backing out. So that was the reason behind having that kind of backout area to go forward out and be able to see the traffic that way better. And the neighbor to the north, we talked a lot about where the deck would go and her sightlines in terms of the sun, and deciding should we put the deck on the other side or on her side. And we decided with the roof pitch and where it was, that the deck being where it is, and if we put a screen up on that side, that that would be the best situation for her from a sightline and sun perspective, and then also blocking off that deck area. This is just a lot of words that Jeff was going to talk about, but he is on the line right now. I'm going to skip you on that. Yeah, so this is what I was saying in terms of what was approved before, where that continuous Oaklawn elevation of 90 feet, and we believe from a massing perspective that the product that we're putting out there right now is a far better product than what was approved with Edina Flats project. Also, this concept from condo versus row home or townhome, after talking with numerous people with Edina Flats and with the condos, having the row home product and not having anyone above you, but having a singular building like that was more positively received and wanted amongst many people that I talked to. Also, I know I've talked to a lot of people and continue to talk to them, and I've mentioned this before, but this is a product, that there is a need for this product. People are wanting to downsize. They're wanting to downsize in price, and they're wanting to downsize in square footage. And with the land costs around Edina, it's proving cost prohibitive unless we do this type of product to split the cost of the land and be able to give this product to people who are looking to downsize. And also, from, these will be available as aging-in-place, and it is a product that there is a huge need for people to safely be able to live in their homes and to be able to live and age in their homes instead of having to go elsewhere because they can't go upstairs. So these buildings will be elevator-ready, and not just elevator-ready. They will have the elevator pit or have the elevator, but the elevator will have a space in there if they choose to put it in. So I talked about a lot of these points already. So Carrie talked about this again in his slideshow. Yes, we would move the sidewalk back, so we would have that boulevard from the area from the street, grass, and then the sidewalk on that Valley View Road. You can already see it on Oaklawn. And then, I believe I've already kind of shown some of the floor plans, but there isn't a lot of extra space. They are 2,500 to 3,100 square feet, depending on, between the three floors, depending on which unit it is. And there's not a lot of extra space. What drives a lot of it is what people want on their main floor. There's not a lot of extra rooms there, so we are pretty much where we need to be from what people are looking for, and also to be able to have the flow that we need from an aging-in-place perspective. This is the upstairs of the ones going to... And so you can see the master bed. It'll have an office, sunroom, little kitchenette, and again, not, and then they'll have the basement with the family room and two bedrooms. And then, these are the ones facing Oaklawn that are a little bit bigger. Then these are the elevations and the materials, asphalt shingles. It's the hardy battened siding, as you can see right there, and then hardy board lapped siding on the bottom, and again, architecturally driven. But I can open it up to any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Remick. Does anyone on the council have questions for Ms. Remick at this point in time? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the changes. It's, yeah, you've taken so many of our comments into account. I want to thank you for that. You did touch on this in your comments. Some of the people who were opposed to this were talking about, well, why couldn't they build something smaller or something commercial? If it were to be a small commercial thing, would that be profitable to build something like that? Is that within the realm of what's economically feasible?
No. I mean, if you look at the footprint of what even would be there, it's, there isn't, I don't know of a type of business that would want to be, to locate in that pie-shaped situation. Even from a commercial standpoint, it doesn't offer that ability for a business to function there.
All right. Thank you. That was my question.
Any questions for Ms. Remick? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening.
Hi.
I have questions, I suppose. The substitution of hardy board for brick, it's, I know you've touched on it. What drives that exactly?
I believe, and again, it's custom home building, and I believe that Jeff, the architect that I'm working with on this product, has produced a very nice product. I believe that also it is a more welcoming atmosphere into a residential neighborhood. I'm not opposed to brick. I just don't, I really don't believe that it's the right product for these homes. I like the way that Jeff has designed the homes as he has, and I feel like it fits within the neighborhood really well.
Okay. I know that, and you touched on this already, the anticipated higher age group market, aging-in-place, as you reference it, and you're set for the elevators. You essentially have those, you have the space and you have the other wiring available, or how does that?
Yeah, so they will, they all have the place where the elevator is going to go. I need to get them all engineered and priced out, and depending on where the price is and where I come in at with it will be if it's actually there. But you'll see a lot of marketing that, or different MLS listings that will say closets are stacked, or it could accept an elevator. When I'm talking elevator-ready, I'm talking the spot is there, it's not used for anything else. You need a pit that goes down into the basement below where the elevator is going to go. That pit will be there. It is elevator-ready from a complete standpoint, not just we could, we have two closets stacked, and you could find a place for an elevator. The electrical will be in there, the box to have everything will be there. It's just whether or not I'm going to actually place the elevator in there or not.
Okay. And so that decision is on a property-by-property basis, or are you thinking about including those entirely?
I think I want to include them entirely.
Okay. And then, so then, that leads to the price point that you anticipate in there?
Correct. Right.
What would that be?
Oh, sorry. I'm hoping that, yeah, I'm hoping that I can get them done between 1-3 and 1-4.
1-3 and 1-4. Okay. The biggest question I have, well, a point that I would make, I still have concerns about setbacks.
Yes.
It's, Valley View is going to be very, very tight, and no question about it. Oaklawn, also tight, but you're just, you don't necessarily have the traffic along there. Turning that corner, even given the boulevard, and thank you for adding that in, even with that boulevard, the setbacks are a concern for me, because I'm not quite sure how snow gets handled there. I, if we had a heavy snow year, I just know it's going to go up there, and then it has to be, and we're going to have to figure out how to clear that off in order for that to be passable. So that's something to consider, and it's clamped in here for me at least. I know that you reviewed your neighborhood meeting, and so, and that seemed to, you've touched on that. The biggest question I have, though, I think, is the, we saw, I think the council saw at one point, a description of your ongoing discussions with the neighbor at 6136. Is that accurate? Did you give a summary of that at one time?
What one, I don't know what one is 6136. I don't remember that, I'm sorry.
That's the adjacent neighbor. That's your immediate north neighbor there, 6136.
Okay.
And I think, I think I remember you having a short description of resolving their concerns.
Well, that was a part of the whole neighborhood meeting. She was there. Yeah.
Okay. And have you had further discussions with that neighbor? That's the, that's the biggest setback issue is right there. I mean, there are safety concerns, I think, along Oaklawn and Valley View. However, that seven-foot setback, that's, you're right there on that neighbor.
Right. So yes, we did, and we talked more about, and that then, thank you, led to all of those evergreens being planted along the whole back as well. And so, there are some trees there right now that don't look so great, and they will be coming down, which I think she's okay with and happy about, but then the replanting of the evergreens along that whole backside there, or along the whole north, the whole north buffer there.
Okay. Okay. Well, good. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Remick at this point in time? All right. I don't either. All right. Thanks, Ms. Remick. All right. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. Let's see a few folks in the audience, I expect their nearby neighbors to this proposed project, and ask them to come forward and identify themselves. And if they have overheads they want to use, I'd suggest using the middle console, yes. And then you'll get a handheld microphone.
Thank you. My name is Julie Rissler. I live at 6112 Ashcroft Avenue. And approval for this project is based on the idea that the setbacks being requested are consistent with the condominium project, but it's only in terms of the number, the measurements alone. And when you look at the original plan, it was a very purposeful plan. And one thing that I find concerning is the original sales contract that was connected to this plan for the land that the city sold to the developer is not in the information packet. And we do know from going back and looking at hearings from 2017, that there were details, descriptions in that sales contract that indicated the parcel to the east would be developed first before the parcel to the west. And Mary Brindle asked about that. Now, with the variances being granted, they were granted because of specific purposes. And at that time, Director Teague said it was important to keep access limited to Valley View Road and to have the parking along the side, and that we did not want to have parking along, or entry along Kellogg or Oaklawn. And so, the very reason, the motivation for granting those setbacks, and he noted that the plans could be done without setbacks, but then we would have to have garages facing onto the street, and we would have to have driveways on Kellogg and Oaklawn. And so, the whole purpose, the motivation for granting those setbacks don't really exist. The idea that the plan creates a pedestrian, active pedestrian streetscape is based only on the fact that there are sidewalks that will be included, but my understanding is that sidewalks have to happen anyway. As we look at the evolution of this project, the original only had one driveway, as I noted. The sketch plan had two, and the garages were hidden more from Valley View as well as Oaklawn. And now, when we get to the revised plan, we've got three. And there's a really important term that we need to convey, and that is conflict point. Okay? And that is something that I think should have been included in your packet, because this is from the Small Area Plan, and it goes over one of the real concerns of this area, which is excessive driveways, and the need to eliminate excessive driveways in this area. We're not eliminating excessive driveways, we're adding to them. So that is a really big problem. And conflict points are areas where you have cars entering onto the site, and while it's convenient for the people who live at the site, it's a conflict point because you've got people trying to walk and bike, and this is a really, really active area. So that's something that we need to keep in mind. You've got kids biking up from Pamela Park, you've got 60 Second spilling on there, you've got people taking walks, and now even, when I was doing my walk, I saw a small child in a little motorized vehicle on the street, not on Valley View, but on Wooddale going down to the park. And so, there's another vehicle that is in the area. I would recommend denial of this project. It's not consistent with the original project. We don't have the contract. We don't know what it says. I also think that instead of just limiting it to four reasons, we should add a fifth, a sixth, and a seventh. And so, I've got those here, and I see the light is yellow, but why weren't pages 59 and 64 key, you know, included in your packet? Why wasn't the original contract included in your packet? So thank you. And I'll close with just this image. Those areas that help you turn around, oftentimes, they end up being parking spots. And this is along Valley View on the opposite side. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rissler. Thank you, Ms. Rissler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Susan Lee, residing at 6708 Point Drive. I served on the Planning Commission from 2014 to 2020 and as Chair of the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan Work Group. The report was finalized in 2015 and approved by the City Council at the end of the year. I wish to speak on behalf of the many residents who contributed to this plan, although that was the first small area plan that we undertook in anticipation of the 2018 comprehensive plan update. Many more were to follow. 50th and France, 44th and France, 70th and Cahill, and the Greater Southdale Design Guidelines. I'm here to tell the council that those documents were approved with the implicit assurance that they would be the plans that the city would follow when approving future development. The proposal before you is asking you to approve significant setback variances from our city zoning rules. The Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan contains all the information you need to make a proper decision regarding granting those variances and whether or not it meets the criteria for practical difficulties. They must be so insurmountable that they absolutely require these variances. One, is the design reasonable? Is the request itself reasonable in its entirety of scope? The Wooddale Valley View Plan has several examples of what will work for this key gateway site. It is the most significant parcel in this neighborhood, both due to its location and its unique shape. We recognized that at the time. The Small Area Plan guides for a possibility of housing, but never to the extent required by this design. Second, is the difficulty due to the uniqueness of the property beyond the control of the landowner? That is the prop, probably the one item that we could all say yes to. The Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan recognized the unique shape and indeed did not rule out a need for flexibility or variances in order to accommodate new development that should add to the Small Area Plan and strengthen the node's character. However, this site, the former Burley Hair Salon site, was originally platted as two single-family home lots. Due to the shape, it was very unlikely that a house could be built on both lots, and somewhere in the past, a commercial structure with surface parking was built instead. All this speaks to a clear recognition that the parcel is subpar for accommodating large structures. Three, does the design meet the essential character specified in the Small Area Plan? Is it within the scale and consistent with the surrounding area? The Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan makes it clear that the scale of this particular proposal places too much building on too little space. The gentle transitions to what is a protected residential area results in a single-family home abutting a 30-foot-tall building separated by six feet. This is not a transition as defined in the plan. You have the plan that was approved by the city's residents. It simplifies your job so that you can stand by the plan and confidently say that this proposal puts too much structure on this particular site.
Ms. Lee, I need to have you wrap up. I've let you go over quite a bit.
I did see it just turned red. This proposal does not meet the goals of the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan.
Thank you. It's good to see you again, incidentally, too. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Ms. Dawn, okay. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue, In Edina. All right. I'm going to strongly suggest that the current proposal just plain not be done. It is not appropriate for the site, just as Susan Lee was just saying. The greater need than four more 1.3 to 1.6 million-dollar places is affordable wheelchair-accessible living. And a very appropriate thing for the site would be working with Habitat for Humanity, perhaps a vets organization for some funding, to have a duplex built on this site with one driveway, single driveway, single level, does not need to have a basement. That's now okay in the city code. And perhaps using some of the city's more affordable housing program framing of taking, putting a maximum of $425,000 into the purchase of a home, existing home that would be rehabbed for more affordable housing. Well, this lot was bought at way too high a price, over $200,000 more than what its assessed value was last year. And now it's even more at this point. Its value has dropped. The proposal that is now before you is four units because they made a poor business decision and overpaid for it. That is not to be put on the shoulders of the neighborhood. That is not right. This project is being done in Richfield. This is on the southwest corner of 66 and Logan. The city acquired that land as part of expanding 66th Street. Habitat now owns the lot. They are building a single-family home with volunteer labor. I went there today, and I talked with the Habitat for Humanity person supervising this project. They were all done for the day, and he was still there. They are doing a fully handicapped accessible bathroom, and they are having a handicapped wheelchair usable ramp inside the garage. This is the type of project that Richfield's doing. Why can't we do it in Edina? We have no currently new affordable wheelchair handicapped accessible housing. Let's do this. This is a perfect location for it. It's close to Pamela Park with its paved trail all the way down there, a paved loop. For someone in a wheelchair, that's a godsend. It is a wonderful place to go do a roll and stroll. The bus is at the door. This is an ideal location for this type of project. Let's get Stephanie Hawkinson seriously looking at this. Let's do this. The city could purchase from the current owners and get some Habitat help for funding. Let's do something that's a good fit, and I will help build it. And I know other neighbors will help build it. And I have spoken with neighbors. We like this idea. I have not heard anybody object to it.
Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Thank you.
Set it down, I think it'll be fine. Anyone else wish to testify? It's present in the chambers. Let's go online now and see if there are others that want to testify that have not previously testified. Again, folks, let's put that number back up on the screen again. Although you should have been queuing up by now. But nonetheless, if you haven't, if you're waiting for that number again, there it is, 888-504-7949. There's the conference ID number, 565-566. Press star one to speak to the operator. Give them your name and address, and then Director Brennerott will bring you in to testify to the council.
We do not have anyone up at the moment. Would you like to wait a minute, or do you think you?
Let's wait a minute, because I think, Ms. Remick, did you want?
Yes.
Do you want to come back up? This is still a public hearing, so. Want to address some of those issues. I've got a question for Director Teague, too. Ms. Remick, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to address one point. I had a severely handicapped sister that passed away 18 years ago at the age of 26. I firmly believe in this product. If somebody with a wheelchair wants to be here, that is what I would like to live here. That is what I believe in with this aging in place. It's also a product that I believe in could offer for that. If we want to have one driveway on, that goes out onto Oaklawn, fine, we can do that. We can make that happen. This product, there is a huge need for people in the community that need handicap accessible. I'm all for it. I want to build it. I want to offer this product for somebody who needs a wheelchair. That is my objective here, is for aging in place and for people. I have a huge, my heart goes towards this type of building, and I believe in it. I'm passionate about it, and that is why I want to build this product.
Thank you, Ms. Remick. Anybody come online? Director Brennerott? Anybody have any questions for Director Teague or anybody else that, or for the applicant? Director Teague, what did the Planning Commission have to say about that side lot setback variance? Or just the variances in general?
So the Planning Commission recommendation was four to two, so it was certainly not unanimous. There were some concerns about the setback and the three driveways as opposed to, you know, two that were proposed as sketch plan. Those that were comfortable with it, you know, the screening along the north lot line will help minimize those impacts. It is, the setbacks are slightly larger than the approved plans in terms of the number. So the majority of the commission was comfortable with it.
All right, thank you. That prompt any follow-on questions for any council members at this point in time? Director Teague is recommending that we postpone any decision on this matter until September 7th, but keep the public hearing open until noon on August 22nd so folks can provide further testimony. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter on August 22nd at noon and continue the action to the September 7 City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, Member Anderson, second by Member Jackson. To the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Now, we've got one last matter here, and that is potential preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan for Solheim Companies at 4646 20 West 77th Street. And Director Teague has this matter as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So this property is located down in Pentagon Park. It's directly adjacent to the Fred Richards Park north of 77th. Current zoning is MDD 6, mixed development district, guided in the comprehensive plan for office residential uses, which allow up to 75 units an acre. The applicant did go through sketch plan review. What you're seeing on the screen is the project directly to the west that's been approved and currently under construction. That's the majority of the building. What we're, before us tonight, is the ghosted section here. So this would be phase two of that project that's currently under construction. What the applicant is proposing here is a seven-story, 276-unit apartment building. 10% of the units would be provided for affordable housing at 50% AMI within the project. The remainder of the units are relatively affordable. They're in the 70% to 120% of AMI range. So in general, this is an affordable housing project. 10% actually meets the, again, meets the, meets our.
I think you used the word attainable before.
Attainable, right. Thank you for that. So what we're seeing here, there would be a restaurant on the corner here. This is the woo-nurf, the pedestrian and vehicular connection through the site. To the, on the right-hand side is one of the existing office buildings on the site that would remain. Here's a look from the Fred Richards Park of the project. Building would be brick on the base with some vertical metal panels. And again, the applicant will go through the building materials in more detail. Here's a look at the site plan. So access to the site, again, off 77th Street. And this is the, what we saw in the rendering, would be a one-way through the development. The access into the underground parking would be right here. Movement out of the site, this would be a one-way going into the site, so two-way exiting would go around the site and out in this, what's highlighted in gray here, that's a new connection that's proposed to Fred Richards Park. So this is the entire site we're looking at. One, one office building would remain, and one would be removed. So a rendering of, again, the pedestrian woo-nurf through the site, the existing office building and the proposed development. On the bottom is a rendering of that new connection to Fred Richards Park. Again, this is one of the key elements to providing that new access to the Fred Richards Park. The applicant has made a number of revisions. They've done a really nice job of responding to both Planning Commission and City Council comments at the sketch plan. I won't steal their thunder. They're going to go through that in, in, in great detail as part of their presentation. So this request requires a rezoning from that MDD 6 zoning district to PUD 23. PUD 23 is the zoning that is currently in place for the project next door, what they're calling the Fred 1. This graphic indicates that the proposed setbacks, height, density is all consistent with that PUD 23 zoning to the west. So the primary issue, is the proposal reasonable to justify the expansion of that PUD rezoning of the site? Again, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval here. The decision by Planning Commission was unanimous. Again, they meet all the zoning standards of that PUD 23 district. The, the project, the key to this is providing that additional access to, to the Fred, both the pedestrian and the vehicular connections, as well as bike. The affordable element is a big piece of this, too, as well as the attainable units. The primary parking is located underground, and it would be, increase the pedestrian movement on the site. The, a traffic study was done by StanTech. Ed Terhar is with us. He is on the line this evening. But the conclusion is that the existing roadways can support the project. In terms of the building height, we did have one comment on Better Together in regard to the height. The height proposed here matches what was approved right next door. We do have that provision in the code that talks about having to be set back a certain distance from single-family homes. So with a seven-story, a seven-story project, the setback needs to be four times the height to the, to a residential district. This graphic will show it better. So they need a 308-foot setback to the nearest R1 property. That would be across the park, and it's over 700 feet from this site. So it would meet that requirement. Again, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval. We did receive a few comments on Better Together. But the recommendation for the council this evening is to close the public hearing at noon on August 22nd and then continue action to your next City Council meeting. With that, I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. Let's bring the applicant up. I think we've got Kurt Guns. I think we've got Curt Gunsbury with us and Jason Lord, maybe more members of their team as well. We'll let them provide introductions and walk us through their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Teague, for the introduction. I'm here with Craig Hartman from Momentum Design Group, Jason Lord, and Kurt Gunsbury as well. We have gotten a lot of great feedback and comments from-
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Jason Lord with Solheim Companies.
Oh, thank you. You may have done that, I just couldn't hear very well. You weren't holding the microphone very closely.
I'll hold it a little closer. Is this better?
Thank you.
Excellent. And we're glad to be here tonight, so, and thank you, and thank you to the Planning Commission for all the great comments on this project through sketch plan and through development of it. I think we've really worked to build on what we learned with the Phase I project, to really iterate it and make it even, even better, and hopefully much better than what you saw at its sketch plan. So, really, the design philosophy was to blend this building into the landscape and blend it into the park, but also to activate pedestrian zones and make a really urban network of connections into the, into Fred Richards Park. We heard a lot about how important the north-south connections were through this site, both for bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles. And we really wanted to activate the corners as well. So, we've made a lot of changes since sketch plan, and I've got to go through some of the comments and changes that we had. We heard from you council member Pierce at sketch plan that was really important to incorporate the park and green space and what's around it. And with the watershed requirements, we've really pulled the building back since sketch plan from the park to create more green space. We actually have a covered patio as well on the back of the building, too. And I'll maybe have Craig drive, and Craig will get into some of the design aspects as well, to really bring that green space forward and integrate with the intersection of the woo-nurf. And then for Councilmember Anderson, we heard at sketch plan to, how do we get to the clubhouse? And I'm sure we'll talk about that with the park access road that could go directly to that as well as the woo-nurf plate, woo-nurf connection, and then how to reduce traffic and slow down the woo-nurf. And that was a major issue with Planning Commission as well, that they were really poignant to get traffic slow on that woo-nurf and try to keep traffic at five miles an hour in the woo-nurf and 20 miles an hour on the park access road, which was in the resolution as well. We also heard from you council member Jackson about really focus on the front door. I think Craig's done a really exciting job with getting that front door, both for the apartments and for the new cafe, to activate the pedestrian space on 77th and really create multiple front doors and entries as well. And then we've also moved programming to the intersection with the park. I know there's discussion about, can we foot a juice bar there? Is it appropriate for commercial? Or what items would be put there? But we did do a second common area and a second entrance right on the intersection of the park and the woo-nurf, so that we keep eyes on that woo-nurf and engaging pedestrian space the whole way. And we heard from you, Councilmember Stunt, about where do pedestrians go and where's the natural flow of this? And that's why we really focused on engaging the woo-nurf space and bringing pedestrians in through two plazas on 77th adjacent to the woo-nurf. And we're planning a speed table as you enter there, so it'll feel like one continuous plaza between our project and the adjacent 4600 office building project. And I think a lot of these moves and improvements in the design were made possible with some of the ideas we discussed in sketch plan. Mayor Hovland, you had the concept to relook at one-way traffic, and we worked with the neighbors Hillcrest to rethink this woo-nurf into a one-way passageway instead of two ways. And that allowed us to unlock all this missing space so that we could activate both sides of the woo-nurf. We're working with Hillcrest to create a front porch feel on their 4600 office building so that that will engage, and they have a similar plaza on the corner of their building that'll match this Phase Two project as well, and blend mid-century modern items into, into this project and into the adjacent office building as well. And with that, you know, design overview, I'll hand it to Craig Hartman, who will go through some, some details on the design here.
Thanks, Jason. Craig Hartman with Momentum Design Group. You know, I mentioned to the Planning Commission that, you know, it's not often that the building sort of plays second fiddle. I kind of feel like that's the case, you know, in this project. But, you know, our focus from the start was to, you know, we're a second phase. We wanted to be different than Phase I, but at the same time, you know, build on the connections that were established in Phase I. You know, both north-south connections that are, that happened to be on our west side. But then there's also some east-west connections through the site that we've maintained, you know, that started in Phase I, and, you know, we've built on that to provide similar connections, actually. You know, east-west through about the middle of our site, actually, over, basically over rooftop plazas, to just sort of allow that connection to happen, allow those, that movement to happen through the site. You know, I think from the very start, it was, it was a focus on sort of how do we, how do we, like Jason said, activate the corners? You know, provide, provide those, those pieces, those areas of interest, you know, people can gather, people, you know, they're destinations for people. You know, from our standpoint, materials on the building, as mentioned, you know, we are predominantly brick is our primary material. We've got kind of a wonderful, what I'm going to call, we're looking for like a bark-like pattern on some of the precast panel. You know, we're kind of working to dial that in to just, just give it a really fantastic feel and look, especially with the lighting kind of cascading down the surface. And then up above, we've got a mixture of metal panel and fiber cement siding. As you could see in some of the earlier images, let me see if I can get to them. You know, Jason talked about the entries and how we were trying to, let me see if I can scroll through these. There we go. Try to establish, establish those nodes on the corners, you know, with some timber framing, just bringing in, again, another natural material to signify those, those sort of pieces and those nodes that we've got. And it sort of draws you from sort of south end of the development that we're looking at here on the screen. We've got another one that you can kind of see in the distance on the, on the north end, and that's actually very close to that open courtyard plaza on the north end that then sort of plugs in and sort of just blends with the park as much as we can. So, it was really a focus on, you know, with, with such a beautiful amenity behind us in Fred Richards Park, just to sort of reinforce what was set up with Phase I and, you know, continue that, that same, that same idea, so.
Thanks, Mr. Hartman. Mr. Gunsbury, anything that you wanted to add?
No comments. No comments. Thank you.
All right, all right. And, Mr. Lord, did that comment, did that cause you to want to comment further on anything?
I, I'm here for any questions and discussion. I think one, one last comment, and I'd like to discuss a bit about it, is the, the access points and how we design for, for the appropriate speeds, because I do think that's key to really make this work for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles as well to get to the park.
Yeah, it looks, looks like it, that you were able, able to accomplish that. Questions for the applicants? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you moved it forward. I went out after you presented at sketch plan, walked around, it's very swampy on the Fred Richards. Can you pull up that picture that shows the back of the building and talk a little bit about, we had the Minnehaha watershed district here this evening, and talk a little bit about how you're, you know, entering the park and just how swampy is it going to be back there?
Yeah, I was actually thinking about that one, Councilmember Jackson, when, when they scheduled presenting, and our assumption right now is it's all going to change, and they're probably going to be moving the wetlands. They're going to reconfigure them, because both our pathway and the, the road pathway are going to change the current lie of the wetlands. So, and because they are actually wetlands, they're going to have to be recreated elsewhere in the park. And as you know, it used to all be wetland, so it will be a difficult thing to do. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can.
So, thinking about the willow tree that you mentioned, a fence under the willow tree, I'm guessing the willow tree will probably go away, will replace it, or the park will replace it with other willow trees at a new wetland area. That's my assumption. So, I think the, the area on the other side of the fence, if you will, you know, the Edina property, the Parkwood property, is going to have to be reconfigured to, I guess, respond to the elements that we're putting in, just because those are the access points. But there's not really any other way to do it. It's, it's going to be a long-term construction project for how they build the wetland infrastructure in the park. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does, but it raises another question. Am I hearing you correctly that you're going to take away wetland and we have to recreate it?
No, actually, so, we're going to build, we'll build our area on, on our side of the fence, which is not wetland.
Okay.
It is in a wetland zone, though, you know, within 20-
A buffer.
Within the buffer zone.
Okay.
But the way the, the park will be developed is going to have to reconfigure that no matter what.
Okay.
Especially when the roadway goes in, because that goes straight into a pond, basically, right now, the way that it lays out.
Yeah.
So, there's definitely going to be some dirt moving that happens. And honestly, I think it'll probably be better for the long term. It'll be a better environment. But even right now, the way it lays out, if you went down there today and laid these plans out and looked at it again, I think you'd see, wow, there's a real-
[laughing]
Because it really lays out beautifully with the way the trees are on the park side of the fence right now. I think it'll be really great someday when the, when the park reconfigures its space.
Okay, terrific. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Just to add a little bit onto that, Councilmember Jackson, it did pull up the civil plans where, you know, it does show in this plan how this is the Fred Phase I and then the Phase II, how it pulls back. And that is really a response to the conditions there and the wetland as well, to maintain that buffer. And we are working with the fire chief as well to, to make sure that we can get access and fire truck access there and create the, the necessary buffer with this project and also really improve added flood storage compared to what's there now. So, we will be really dropping the, the grade of the site compared to what's there now. That both will help access to the park, because right now, it's up almost 15 feet above the park, and create more flood storage as well on the site.
Terrific, thank you.
Director Teague, I was thinking, as Member Jackson was asking that question, that in one of the prior iterations from another developer, one of the ideas was when, when the, when the park, assuming we get the local option sales tax passed and we can do the work in the park that we want to do, one of the prior iterations we saw had waterway along that common area back there where that transition zone from their Solheim property to the park, there was a beautiful waterway back in there. And so, you, it was really kind of a seamless transition, but it dealt with that, that low, you know, or the high water table, just by creating more of a waterway effect like you'd have over at Centennial Lakes, for example. That may be a possibility, but I think you guys would probably benefit from seeing that, that elevation and maybe, Member Jackson, and the rest of us would as well, as we think about ideas of what to do in the park. Anyway, other questions? Other questions from council members for the applicant's team at this point in time? Okay, stand by, we may have some more. We're going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter? Would you, would you sit down now, Mr. Lord?
Yes, sorry.
And leave the microphone there?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Steve Brown. My address is 5528 Halifax Lane. I've sent each of you an email in support of this project. I won't take your time this evening repeating any of my many reasons for my support. Instead, I'd like to suggest an idea. One concern that's been raised about this project is that the proposed vehicle access road to Fred Richards Park, while much needed and a significant improvement over the current obscure access road, is very basic. It's about as simple as it can possibly be. For example, there's no pedestrian walkway along either side of that access road. Later on tonight's agenda, you'll be voting on the new off-street parking ordinance. This ordinance significantly reduces the required off-street parking for new developments. I wonder if this ordinance, if approved, could be, provide some flexibility in the number of parking places required for the existing office buildings. If the number of places could be reduced, this might open up some space for a pedestrian walkway. I urge you to support this project, and I hope that you'll explore or investigate my suggestion a little bit further. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yeah, between preliminary and, if it gets approved on a preliminary basis, and final, we can take a look at some of those issues. Anybody else in the audience wish to testify? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to turn now to Director Bennerott. Let's get that number back on the screen again in case folks want to call in and testify. 888-504-7949, conference ID number 565-566. Press *1 on your phone, give the operator your name and number, and the operator will ring you to Director Bennerott. Anybody on the line, Director Bennerott?
I don't have anyone. I'm very lonely over here tonight.
All right.
But I, I think we should probably wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 8:46. I'll come back to you when I have a caller, or eight, actually, just turned to 8:47. I'll come back to you at 8:48, or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
I'll hold up.
We're still on TV.
It is 8:48, and I don't have anyone, so I think it's safe for you to move forward.
All right, very good. Our community development director, Kerry Teague, is suggesting that we pass a motion closing the public hearing in this matter at noon on August 22nd and continue the action to the September 7 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by a member Pierce, that we close the public hearing on this matter at noon on August 22nd and continue the action to the September 7 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Carried. All right, that completes the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. We're going to return now to, or turn now to reports and recommendations. And the first matter there is Resolution 2022-76, and that is a resolution accepting donations. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2022-76, which accepts donations on behalf of the city. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-76, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? I lost my screen here, folks. Maybe somebody could tell me who was the, oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, thanks, Member Stunt, and Seal Smith. We had a single donation, the donor is Seal Smith, $1,850 for shuffleboard and accessories for the senior center. For those of you who don't know who Seal Smith is, she was, I believe, the Assistant City Manager or the Human Resources person at the city for-
All of that.
Decades, yeah, all those things.
Yeah.
At one point in time, and continues to have a strong affinity for our, our community and a very generous donation on her part, $1,850. Thank you, Member Stunt, for that. And now, let's turn to the other matter that's in this portion of the agenda, and this is something that we took up at our last meeting, and it's a potential second reading or grant second reading and adopt ordinance 2021-07, which would amend our off-street parking regulations. This requires a voice vote, simple majority. I don't know, Director Teague, if you have anything further you want to add?
Nothing further. We made the presentation with Commissioners Lou Miranda and Chair Kate Agnew at the last meeting. The council directed staff to add into the ordinance the recommendation- The council directed staff to add into the ordinance the recommendations from the Engineering Department regarding sustainability. Those have been included in the ordinance, and we would recommend that you pass this on second reading.
All right. I know that Councilmember Anderson wants to make a suggestion here to all of us on some of the elements of the proposed amendment to the parking ordinance. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of thoughts. The ordinance as presented, what it's intended to do, Director Teague, I believe, is to bring our current usage into an ordinance which is clear for everyone. And so, you know, I support that. I think it's a good idea. As we mentioned, we haven't changed this in 50 years, and so it's, the times come. I do want to mention, however, along the way, that we want to be careful as we go forward. I think during the first reading, I believe it was Member Staunton who mentioned that we find whether something is working well or not working quite as well through the variances that are requested. And in most of the development that we've seen, especially the multifamily development that we've seen, we find that the variances that have been requested have been for less than the minimums in our existing ordinance, in the current ordinance. And so it makes sense to move ahead with that. I do want to, though, go very carefully as we move forward on this, that we gauge what the development community and what existing businesses and how they're reacting. I think we want to be very careful going forward, that we are meeting the needs of the community and the potential for development and the flourishing of businesses within it. Along with that, and I support this ordinance with one exception. I would like to move that on Section 1, Paragraph D, this relates to nursing convalescent homes, and that would include hospices as well, that we maintain the minimum of one space for every four, as opposed to the proposed ordinance of one space for every five. I think that that is a more sensitive position on the part of the city. These would be in almost entirely visitor spaces that are included there that would be affected. And very often, I think we'll find that elderly members of our community in crisis, as they often are in these settings, we don't want to inconvenience family and friends who might come there. So I'd like to make that motion, and then if that were approved, then support the ordinance going forward.
All right, I think we could do it in a single motion. And so if I understand you correctly, what you're doing is making a motion, or you could make a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-07, an ordinance amendment regarding off-street parking regulations, with the exception that we would leave Section 1D of that proposed ordinance in its present form, requiring at least one space for every four patients, not five patients.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I would second with the note that it looks like "at least" is added as well, so it's not in its current form. So just for precision, you're still okay with saying "at least"?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we got a motion by a member Anderson and a second by a member Staunton to adoption of ordinance 2021-07, with the exception of leaving Section 1D in its present posture under the existing ordinance.
Except that it...
Yeah, with at least one space for every five, four patients.
Right. Well, the words "at least" are not in the present form.
Oh, so, yeah, I misspoke. Okay. Did I muddle it up there, or does everybody understand well enough?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, well, actually, in favor of adoption of ordinance 2021-07 in the form stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right. Thank you, Member Anderson.
Thank you.
And now we're on to manager comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. We will be bringing to you at your September 7th council meeting the first reading of the ordinance establishing the regulatory and licensing structure for the THC-infused products. We had thought about doing that tonight, just didn't have enough time to get it ready for you, but we will have it ready for you at your September 7th meeting to have a first crack at that. On September 20th, we have teed up the policy directive on the fence consortium that we talked about at the council when you adopted or approved that, participating in that joint powers authority. So we have that ready, we will have that ready to go by September 20th. And then finally, just on a schedule note, please note that the first meeting, council meeting in October, is a Thursday. We, Thursdays are rare nights for us. It just falls that way because of holidays this year. So October 6th is a Thursday. That would be your first council meeting in October. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Very good. Let's keep rolling right down the dais here. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yesterday, I attended the second policy meeting of the League of Minnesota Cities. I went there as part of the city climate caucus to talk about, we want to amend the ordinance, or the policies of the League of Minnesota Cities, to include lobbying for state with, for the state for climate adaptation. And that goes to our work session meeting. We've got these big flood infrastructure things we're going to be talking about, and this enables the League of Minnesota Cities to lobby for some help from the state on climate adaptation. While I was there, they brought up a discussion about, they want to introduce a policy, and I would like my colleagues' input on this, about allowing cities to fundraise for things like parks and fire departments and stuff, where not, we can accept donations, but we can't actively fundraise from the public directly. And this would change state law to allow that gift statute to allow us to do some fundraising. I wanted to throw that out there. I'm uncomfortable with that, and I talked briefly to Director Vedder about the parks, and he raised the question of, well, you've got fundraising, some neighborhoods will raise money and not others will, so there's a question of equity. I'm not sure. So I will be going to the September policy meeting, and if you guys would like me to, I can speak on this. But it does make me a little uncomfortable to think about replacing taxing power with charitable donations. I kind of think it should come through the front door so that it covers the city equitably. But besides that, I've been looking at the federal infrastructure bill, trying to get some of that federal money for our flood infrastructure if we can, and that's what I've been up to.
You had me thinking about the way the community foundation was structured years and years ago when I was on the council. It was a creature of the school district and the city, and before it became a community foundation, made that transition into a 501(c)(3). And the reason it made that transition was because both those governmental entities found it difficult to raise money for foundational purposes, because they would run into the roadblock of people saying, well, I already pay property taxes, so I want to give the city more money for, more money than they have to. And that may be sort of an extreme example, but I think it was perplexing for people as to why the city would, you know, have this regulatory authority and be engaged in assessing property taxes, and then coming out and asking for money for the community foundation so they could do other things. So it is, you know, your instincts for me are correct in a different sort of way. I don't, I don't think it's a good approach.
The only thing I would add is, I seem to recall our Parks and Rec Commission talking about exploring different ways of financing our park system, and I think there's some nuance there, and we shouldn't, you know, if we, if that authority is created at a state level, it doesn't mean we have to do it that way, or maybe we can tailor the way we do it. And if it gives us some authority to try to create some new way of thinking about financing, I wouldn't want to shut that down, so.
Good comment. All right, Member Anderson?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor. I was out of town all last week and not quite caught up, so take a bye tonight. Thank you.
No, yeah, you were at the hockey game in midweek.
I was actually, well, I guess I'm going to make this comment anyway. I spent the week in Cooperstown at the Hall of Fame and accompanied an Edina team that was in an 82-team tournament there. And, of course, normally, town teams don't do particularly well in that type of tournament, because these are very often structured as regional and select teams that attend these. And our guys were 5-0 at the end of pool play, which has never been done by an EBA team in that setting. Now, you know, we couldn't really hold up going forward, but I, it was, it was a lot of fun, and there were many, the Hall of Fame, for a baseball fan, is, that's it. And so it was a great experience. And I just mentioned one other thing. One of these players had a birthday while he was there and actually hit a home run on his birthday, and as he hit home plate, that whole team surrounded him and sang "Happy Birthday." And I got to tell you, I don't think there was a dry eye in the place. It was really just, it was very reassuring, very encouraging, so.
You got Member Staunton all perked up, having been a baseball player at the University, and then also been a coach, assistant coach on the only, maybe the only championship team, national championship team Edina Legions ever had.
I got to get there. Sounds great.
Member Staunton, comments?
The only thing I wanted to mention is, when Steve Sando and James Whisker were here from the watershed district, it was kind of a flashback for me. The mayor and I were on the council when we, when we went through the Arden Park thing, and they made it sound so easy, and it wasn't. That was 100 miles of tough road and a hard decision for all of us, but it's so cool to see what it's turned out to be, and it's reassuring when we do things like in Weber Park, that, yeah, it looks awful for a while, but it's going to come back and it's going to be even better. And so I think that's a really good lesson for folks to remember, that sometimes these things take a little while to turn the corner, but it took a lot for us to put a stake in the ground and say we were going to do that, because there were a lot of folks who liked it the way it was and couldn't see that it might be better. And so I think that's just, it's just good to pause and remember those things sometimes, because there'll be more of those in the future, and you have to, you have to remember that sometimes you have to fight through some headwinds to get something done the right way. So it was, it was a good memory for me.
Well said. Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of along the same theme, I want to encourage our community to get out and enjoy these great parks that we have. And I had another story I wanted to share. This one, again, was at Braemar, doesn't include you, Mr. Mayor. But it was a very, I was touched by it. So I'm pulling out of the parking lot, and I see a couple on the nine-hole golfing. And I literally pulled over, I actually took a photo of what I saw as well. So I don't know who this couple was, but if they're, if they're listening to City Council, this is to you. So there were, they had two golf carts, two pool carts, and the husband was pulling both carts, and the mom had a stroller. And so I sat there and I watched. She would hit her ball, he'd hit his. He would take both golf bags over to her ball, she would push the stroller, she would hit, and then they would then go to his ball, get to the green, same thing, they both putt, and then he would go to the next hole, carrying both of those clubs, both sets of clubs, and then she had a stroller. And so I just, like, that couldn't happen at just any golf course, to be able to, the terrain, the ease of playing the nine-hole at Braemar, the, how gracious people are once it gets kind of busy on the nine-hole, there's a lot of waiting. But I just thought that was an awesome sight to see, that we're creating opportunities for things like that. So if you haven't gone out and enjoyed one of these great parks in Edina, you might run out of time, so get out there now and enjoy that. So that was all I had today.
Thank you. Director Bennerott, do you have that? It went to a memorial service for the Edina resident. Some of you may remember her. Yeah, pull it down just a little bit, yeah. Kay Bock was her name. And it was, it was, the memorial service was held over at the cemetery in Minneapolis, Lakewood, at the chapel over there. But she was, and there were many members of our League of Women Voters there, because she was 54 years in the League of Women Voters. She was, you know, I remember her being, working, working actively with Jim Van Valkenburg, one of our former mayors, Denny Metzl, Fred Richards. She and a woman named Betty Hempstead chaired the centennial celebration that's in the obituary here back in 1988. She raised money for the Edina Community Foundation. They used to have a big annual ball, and she was just an incredible force in the volunteer world in our community for generations, really, and affected so many people. Had a great attitude, loved golf, loved horses, and was a world traveler. So the best two, Kay Bock, three girls and their families, and it was nice to be able to attend on behalf of the city and express appreciation for a life well-lived, a life well-lived, lived in service to others. So thank you, Kay Bock. Other matters that I thought I'd just report out quickly on, Manager Neal and Grace Hancock and I had a Zoom conversation with Excel on this program that they're running called Carbon Free Future Coalition, and we've got Grace Hancock taking a look at whether or not we're an appropriate fit to be joining that coalition, but we'll keep people posted on that and then have a discussion with the council about it when the time is right. Then in terms of another potential resolution that's coming up, I thought about it when the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District was making their presentation. Dick Miller, Richard Miller, in our community, has been a longtime member of the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and has done a fabulous job looking out for our interests. He was a financial person, a public finance person with Wells Fargo for his, most of his career. At one time was on the Minneapolis City Council. You know, we've got three, I think, former Minneapolis City Council members living in Edina, but he was on there as well. And so he's up for reappointment, and because of a case that Mr. Kendall would know about and Kevin Staunton would know about, up in Anoka County, it now requires, I think, a Lex city, Lexington or something, it requires the cities file resolutions of support for people going on boards and commissions. At least in an abundance of caution, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District is saying, well, you better have some city support. So I think we should continue to support his desire to be on the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, and they're going to send us a form of proposed resolution that we'll take a look at, and when the timing is right, I think, maybe sometime after November 1st, and the reappointments are in February, and you have to go through interview process with the county. So, and then we had a Minnesota Heels 2.0 meeting this week, and last week, we had, I'm on a violent crime subcommittee led by Mark Ossler from Edina, the law prof I mentioned from St. Thomas. And so we've made some suggestions, and the summary of our suggestions to the, to the big committee, which was, that meeting was held just yesterday, are in your packet or I said, had Jennifer Garsky send it to you by email, so you can see what's going on there, and stay tuned of what we're working on. We're trying to work on a strategy in the suburbs. You know, we've got a keen interest in making sure that our community stays safe, too. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can work with, work with the county, work with Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. Our chief talked to the director of the BCA, the superintendent of the BCA, Drew Evans, and they've talked about some things that we might be doing, including trying to recruit former investigators that are now retired. The federal government's going to come up with about 3000. are now retired. The federal government's going to come up with about $300,000 to pay investigators because they're not getting a fast enough closure rate on these cases that are in, in process. So they want to get a quicker closure rate and they need investigators to put the cases together effectively so they can get the closure they need. There's 21,000 warrants outstanding in Hennepin County. The young guy that shot the 15-year-old on the, down by Target Field on the train platform, five outstanding warrants, as I recall, who they mentioned in the meeting yesterday. So we got to do a more effective job on some of these things and tamping down the violent crime. And then other, other subcommittees are working on, well, what to do with the kids? How are we going to get them back on the straight and narrow and help them out? So that's what's going on there. Colville Banker, your old group had a great time at Braemar
Yes.
Last Monday. I was asked to go out there and just make a few comments and welcome them to the city. They must have had 200-plus people out there and never seen the parking lot so full.
Good job.
And they had a fabulous time out there. So it was fun to be associated with that. And then another person, one of my neighbors, guy who got me involved in Rotary passed away, Kevin Reese, and his funeral will be next week. And so I'll report back on that when we know a little bit more there too. And I think that's, that's it for me for a report on. And that caused anybody else to have any other thoughts on anything? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adjourn the meeting of the city council. This 16th day of August 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned.